Welcome and good evening, everyone. I want to call to order this and welcome everybody to our board meeting for the school district number seventy-three, Public Board of Education on this day, December the ninth. Yes, trustee Sim. I was going to say that. Inquisitical. Okay, so just so that everyone knows, before I get into our land acknowledgements and welcoming everybody for the evening, our microphones work only for online and for recording and unfortunately don't work in the room. So I, being loud has never been a challenge for me overall, so I will try to speak as loudly as I can. But if there's anything that's not clear, if anyone sees anyone behind me raising their hand that I need to speak up, definitely do so. Or I thought I saw Curtis Howell walk in in the back, he can always yell at me as well if he's here in the room. You're his brother. You can text Curtis and tell him to yell at me. Anyway, um, so I want to welcome everybody this evening to this public board meeting of the Board of Education, School District Seventy-three, the Countess Thompson. I want to express my gratitude and honor, acknowledge that we are meeting this evening on the unceded territory of the Squamik people, specifically to come with the Squamik Nation where we are honored to live, work, and play. I have a lot of gratitude for the Squamik people who have been the stewards of this land since time immemorial. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. Before we get into our meeting as well, we always go through a little bit of an overview of what's kind of expected throughout the meeting. We're obviously going to have a performance this evening, and so we ask that people, everyone present, that we remain respectful throughout our time here together, that any rude or foul language, which I never think would happen during a kid's concert, or aggressive or abusive behavior such as outbursts, won't be tolerated. We will consider inflammatory statements, remarks of a racial or discriminatory nature, or unsubstantiated allegations to be abusive behavior. Should this occur and I feel that the meeting is no longer manageable, I will call a short recess and we will have the trustees and other people escorted out of the room. And if there are further disturbances, the RCMP will be contacted. If you could ensure that your cellphones are on silent so that this meeting is not interrupted. And I will also add that we do not consent, other than the performance, to us being recorded. This meeting always is recorded, so people can always go back and watch that. But for personal recording, we ask that we not be recorded. And that is it for kind of the rules that we are looking for or the expectations of people being in the crowd. So we wanted to welcome everybody this evening. Trustees, I'm going to look for a motion to adopt the minutes from the regular public board meeting of November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, moved by trustee Kang, seconded by trustee Karpuk. Is there any discussion on the minutes circulated for this evening's meeting? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Before we move on as well, I will say that trustee, trustees Hickson and Ophi are kind enough to join us online today. Trustee Ophi from China, trustee Hickson from Not So Far Away, and trustee McCalvi sends her regrets this evening as well. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda circulated in your packages. Moved by trustee Jules, seconded by trustee Karpuk. Is there any, anything that trustees would like lifted from this evening's consent agenda? Yes, trustee Sim.
AP three nineteen, three sixty point two, and APT, or AP one zero two.
And AP one zero two. Okay, so you're asking for AP three nineteen, opioid overdose response protocol, AP three sixty point two appendix for the academic integrity, and AP one oh one annual reports?
No, AP one oh two is school learning plans.
Okay, sorry, thank you. So if that can be noted, those will be lifted and moved to, we've learned this before, under new business, so under ten on our agenda for us to discuss those APs. Is there anything else that trustees would like lifted from this evening's consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I will call the question for the approval of the consent agenda with the lifted, with the lifted items. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries, thank you so much. We will move on to item next. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting as circulated. Moved by trustee Kang, seconded by vice chair Kershaw. Are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda? Yes, trustee Sim.
One under thirteen, please.
Any other additions or deletions? Dr. Nixon, anything for you?
Thank you, board chair Grieve, to the board and to the gallery. I'll bring forward the DPAC response to DPAC questions letter and response to questions from Chris Ponti as correspondence.
Thank you so much. So we've got two under correspondence from Dr. Nixon, which are written responses to DPAC letter and to letter to Mr. Ponti. Thank you so much. And acting secretary treasurer Talon, anything from you?
Thank you, Chair Grieve, nothing from you this time.
Thank you so much. Trustees, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the agenda as amended? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried, thank you so much. Moving on to, I'm sure the reason why people are in the gallery, not to hear the rest of the business, the education topic this evening, which is the Countess Thompson Honor Choir performance. And Dr. Nixon, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening to everyone who's here, all the family members and the supporters of our wonderful students in the Countess Thompson Children's Choir, which, as you know, is made up of grade three to seven students throughout our district, and each of whom had an audition for a place in the choir. Students meet each week at Countess School of the Arts to hone their skills and share their love of singing. Now, this evening, we are joined by district fine arts coordinator Alana Munzi, along with Jenica Elpa, conductor of the choir, Lori Froze, accompanist, and Tekeisha Lightfoot, manager of the choir. So now I'll turn it over to the district fine arts coordinator, Alana Munzi, to introduce tonight's guest. Thank you.
Jenica Elpa, accompanist LJ Froze, choir manager Tekeisha Lightfoot, Michael Woods, and Sam Supens, as well as sixty students from around school to district seventy-three between grade three and eight that make up the Countess Thompson Children's Honor Choir. We are excited to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of this choir this spring. They will begin tonight singing Turn, followed by a Christmas medley, which is a mashup of holiday songs we are sure you will all know, and finally a song called Stretchy Pants.
Thank you so much. Um, I have so many questions, no. I will, I will ask trustees first, I will ask trustees first whether or not anyone has any questions or comments. I know I have a couple of thoughts, but just thank you so much for such a great performance. As I'm looking around the room, I don't think I've seen bigger smiles in this room in a very long time. And questions about the Amazon stretch pants, I'm sure, are.
Skinny girl.
Oh, it's so good. It's just also good. Um, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not seeing any specific questions. I think, it was amazing. I think I can speak for the majority of trustees who have been here for a long time and for all of us, that this is one of our favorite nights of the year because we get a chance to really celebrate the, obviously, the holiday season that's kind of upon us, but also to celebrate you in the room, not only you who are up singing your hearts out, but also the adults who have shown leadership within this room as well, and to the parents who support and caregivers that support all of what you do. I guess one of my questions is how many of you, will this be your last time performing? Or are you close to graduation? Like, is this kind of the last time that you'll be performing at a Christmas part of the honors choir? Is it something that you plan and continue to do? These are the kind of questions that I have, and how much fun is it? I guess would be my question to anybody who wants to answer. Yes? Super fun? Do you mind if I ask what grade you're in? You're in grade six, and this is your first year?
Yeah.
Amazing.
Our teacher recommended.
Your teacher. So you audition? Yes. That's amazing, yes.
I just figured this out last year, but I'm in love with singing and performing, so I'm.
Yes.
Those two are, so I think we're kind of popping out this year.
Going to be your last year? You're not talking about it?
I have these back row kids since they were this big.
That's fair enough. Is there anyone else who wants to answer? Yes?
I just really enjoy singing and performing. It's just one of the things that just makes my day, and it's just really.
So awesome.
Oh. I'm going to go one, then the back row, and then the back row.
It's just like. It's just how like. How like all like. We're all learning the songs together and then like.
Love it, yes, in the back row.
Choir is a really good community because everyone here wants to be here, and everyone is super kind. So coming to choir is really fun because you get to see your friends and you get to sing with them. And yeah, it's just really great.
Thank you, and yes, in the back, in the back there, kiddo.
I think that her schools are like.
That's amazing, yes.
And I just think it's a big family singing kids.
A big family singing kids. So, you know what, I want to thank you so much for sharing your experiences. And so for those who are, I guess, who are graduating out of this period of being a part of this particular choir, I think it's amazing that you get to hear in the room the way that you've impacted over the years, the ones who are just joining the choir and moving through, and that it's going to the schools and inspiring other people to be a part of it. That's going to be my takeaway. Honestly, your words that you have spoken are as meaningful and as powerful as what you've sang, sung for us this evening? With all the gratitude from the Board of Education, honestly, thank you so much for your commitment, for your time, for sharing your talents with us, and for all of the adults, caregivers, everyone else in the room who has helped make this possible. You should be incredibly proud, what a talented group of young people. And can't wait to see where your future takes you. Thank you so much this evening, thank you. Dr. Nixon, does that conclude this agenda item for you this evening?
Yes, and I just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you from me as well. It was wonderful seeing all of you, as well as all of your, actually, the people who have come after you have mentioned how much they miss choir, even when I go to high schools and so on. So it's wonderful, have a great, have a great experience the next two weeks.
Thank you. So for everyone in the gallery who came for the entire board meeting, and they're going to be disappointed that we're not going to be as exciting as the rest of what you just saw. We say this all the time, that you are welcome to stay, but you are absolutely free to go. So we can take a few minutes while everyone has a chance to, to exit, and have a safe and happy holiday season, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. They're amazing, yes. All right. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll just wait for the room to, to clear, and then we'll reconvene in about two minutes here. All right, thank you, thank you, everybody. And thank you, Dr. Nixon, as always, for that, that education topic, it's always such a great one. We will move on to item next. This evening, we have no public inquiries, petitions, or written presentations. Parent advisory groups and district parent advisory groups, which moves us on to reports from superintendents of schools. And Dr. Nixon, I will turn that over to you.
Thank you, through you, board chair Grieve, to the board. As per Board Policy Two, Section fifteen, the board approves field trips outside of B.C., including international travel. I will ask that Assistant Superintendent Riley speak to the Westside Field Trip that he has done a report on, thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Nixon, through you, Chair Grieve, to the board. Principal Camita from Westside Secondary School is requesting approval for seventeen students to travel to France, Spain, and the Basque Country in March twenty twenty-five over spring break to tour numerous sites connected to French and Spanish history and culture. The purpose of this trip is for students to experience the languages, histories, and cultures they have studied, and to have an authentic language and communication experience as stated in the British Columbia Foreign Language Curricula. There is a list below of some of the opportunities the students will participate in. The departure date for this trip is March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Students will be traveling by charter bus to Cologne Airport and then traveling by airplane to Paris. Students will return home on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. A draft itinerary is provided in the field trap, field trips, or application package for trustees to view. Parents have been consulted and have indicated their support and approval for this trip. Ms. LaRoche and Ms. Bovare have been organizing ongoing fundraising opportunities to offset the cost of this trip for students and families. In addition, as per Admin Procedure five oh six, student financial assistance, no student will be denied the opportunity to participate in this field trip due to financial hardship. All the plan, sorry, as the plans for this field trip become finalized, I will work with Principal Camita to ensure the itinerary and parent information are completed according to Administrative Procedure two sixty, field trips. There is a recommendation for the board to consider. It reads as the Board of Education approves 17 Westside Secondary students in grades 10 to 12 to travel to France, Spain and the Basque Country from March 17th to March 25th, 2025. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Riley. So trustees, do you have any questions for Assistant Superintendent Riley or any staff before we look at entertaining someone who wants to move this motion that was recommended for, for us in your package? All right, seeing no questions. Is there anyone who wants to move the motion as stated by Assistant Superintendent Riley? Moved by trustee Ophi, seconded by trustee Kang. Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much for that, Assistant Superintendent Riley. Uh, Dr. Nixon, moving on to item next.
So the next item is also regarding field trip and it is also one that Assistant Superintendent Roddy has supervised. So I will turn it over to him to explain it.
Thanks again, Superintendent Nixon. Through you, Chair Grieve to the board. Move my mic here a little bit, sorry. Once again, Principal Camita from Westside Secondary School is requesting approval this time for 34 students to travel to New Orleans, Louisiana in March 2025 over spring break to tour numerous sites connected to musical history and experience a rich collection of musical enrichment activities. The purpose of this trip is multifaceted and provides students with the opportunity to experience the rich musical traditions of New Orleans. These experiences will enable students to gain a broader understanding and appreciation of diverse musical styles. Again, there is a list below of some of the activities that students will participate in. The departure date for this trip is March 15th, 2025. Students will be traveling by charter bus to Sea-Tac Airport and then traveling by airplane to Louisiana. Students will return home on March 23rd, 2025. Once again, there is a draft itinerary for trustees to look at in the field trip application package. With this trip, parents have also been consulted and indicated their support and approval for the trip. Mr. Heel and the Westside Music Boosters Club have been participating in ongoing fundraising opportunities to offset the cost of this trip for students and families. As with the previous trip, as per Administrative Procedure 506, Student Financial Assistance, no student will be denied the opportunity to participate in this field trip due to financial hardship. As the plans for this trip become finalized, I will work with Principal Camita to ensure that itinerary and parent information are completed according to AP 260 Field Trips. This is a recommendation report. There is a recommendation for the board's consideration and it reads as the Board of Education approves 34 Westside Secondary students in grades 10 to 12 to travel to New Orleans, Louisiana, USA from March 15th to March 23rd, 2025. I'm here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Riley. I see that trustee Karpuk has a question on this agenda item before we look at entertaining a motion. Yes, trustee Karpuk.
I just want to express a concern as to how the payments for the field trip are being processed through a Gmail account. I think that leads to some potential challenges in terms of tracking the money and whether or not it's being. I'd really hate to see Mr. Heel or whoever it is looking at it supervising that find themselves in a bit of a tricky spot. So I just hope that the school finds an alternate way of accepting those transfers rather than a Gmail account. I think it just leaves people in a very precarious and risky place.
Thank you so much, trustee Karpuk. I will connect with Principal Camita tomorrow and I agree that is a concern for sure. So we will rectify that.
Thank you very much for that, trustee Karpuk. Any other comments or discussion before we look at entertaining a motion this evening? All right, seeing none. Trustees, I don't know if anyone is comfortable or wanting to move the motion for this field trip as recommended. Yes, moved by trustee Kang, seconded by trustee Karpuk. Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Moving on to item next is another field trip, I believe, Dr. Nixon.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Board Chair Grieve to the board. So this is another field trip for this time Assistant Superintendent Carson to explain to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nixon. Chair Grieve through to you to the board. This is a request from Principal Lloyd from Camelot School of the Arts requesting approval for 10 students to travel to Seattle, Washington from May 27th to 30th, 2025 to tour a number of sites connected to the history of West Coast rock and roll music. The purpose of the field trip is to provide grade 12 students the opportunity to go on a large scale trip and they'll be taking in such tourist and learning opportunities such as Museum of Pop Culture, the Jimi Hendrix exhibit, a tour of the KEXP radio station to explore the history of grunge music. And then students will get either the opportunity to tour the University of Washington Music Department or they could take a sound engineering masterclass for all age, ages of music in the Vera Project. And then rounding off this trip, students will attend a music conference. So it's an opportunity for students to experience the history of West Coast rock and roll. Parents have been consulted and indicated their support and approval for the trip. They continue to meet monthly to complete various fundraising opportunities to help offset the costs for this trip. And then to further decrease costs, some of the chaperones will be driving students instead of chartering buses for some of the smaller pieces of the trip. And all chaperones will have criminal record checks done and will be required to have a minimum $5 million deductible on their insurance. No students will be denied the opportunity to participate as per AP 506 Student Financial Assistance. And as the plans for this trip continue to be finalized, I'll continue to work with Principal Lloyd to ensure the itinerary, parent information is all developed according to AP 260 Field Trips, including final costs, planned medical coverage and assurance that all passports are in order. This is for recommendation that the Board of Education approves 10 students from the Camelot School of the Arts to travel to Seattle, Washington from May 27th to 30th, 2025 as presented.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Carson. Trustees, is there any discussion on this field trip or this agenda item before we look at entertaining the motion that Assistant Superintendent Carson has outlined for us this evening? All right, seeing none. Is anyone wanting to move the motion as presented? Moved by Vice Chair Kershaw, seconded by trustee Karpuk. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. And Dr. Nixon, we have one more, I believe, one more field trip as well.
I guess. Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Grieve to the board. And this one is also overseen by Assistant Superintendent Carson, who will explain it. Explain it now.
Thank you, Dr. Nixon. Through you, Board Chair Grieve to the board. This is another request from Principal Lloyd from the Camelot School of the Arts requesting approval for 37 grade 10 to 12 students to travel to New York, New York, May 14th to 19th. And this is for 2026. And they will be attending a tour of sites connected to music history and enrichment activities. The purpose of this trip is to provide students with musical enrichment and history tour of iconic hub for Western music. On this trip, students will be able to tour venues such as the Gershwin Theater, Rose Theater, Metropolitan Opera House and the Lincoln Center. Students will also have educational tours of Lincoln, the Lincoln Jazz Museum, as well as the Museum of Broadway. Students will attend three Broadway productions and an evening of jazz performance at the Blue Note Jazz Club. It's a fantastic opportunity to experience the evolution of music in North America. Parents have been consulted and indicated their support and approval for the trip. They continue to meet every month to plan and complete numerous fundraising activities to help offset the costs. And over the next two years, that will continue to offset the costs of this high value trip. No student will be denied the opportunity to participate due to financial hardship as per AP 506 Student Financial Assistance. And as the plans for this trip continue to be finalized, I will continue to work with Principal Lloyd to ensure the itinerary, parent information are all developed according to AP 260 Field Trips, including the specific dates, final costs, planned medical coverage and assurance that all passports are in order. And so this one seems like it's a little ways out, but it's a little more expensive of a trip. And so that's why it's before you tonight to ensure that there's board approval so the fundraising can continue and ensure that students can fully participate in these opportunities. The recommendation before you is that the Board of Education approves 37 students from Camelot School of the Arts to travel to New York in May 2026 as presented.
Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Carson. Trustees, are there any questions about this field trip or this agenda item before we look at entertaining the motion that was outlined and stated by Assistant Superintendent Carson? All right, seeing none. Do I have a mover for this motion? Moved by trustee Karpuk, seconded by Vice Chair Kershaw. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Moving on to item next is yours as well. And thank you to Assistant Superintendents Riley and Carson for having those packages ready for us. So thank you so much. So Dr. Nixon, item next, 8.5 Feeding Futures Fund.
Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Grieve to the board. The Board of Education is committed to ensuring the well-being of students, including meeting their social, emotional, academic and physical needs with equitable access to food as one component. The Feeding Futures Fund is a special purpose fund intended to increase food security through the expansion or creation of school snack and meal programs and specialty food literacy, food education and cultural pilot projects. Last year, schools developed plans for snack and meal programs as well as infrastructure to develop sustainable food programming. Assistant Superintendent Mattis and District Principal Carmichael will provide current information about the programming in year two of Feeding Futures. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nixon. Through you, Chair Grieve to the board. With permission, I'd just like to move to the status update. Food, the Feeding Futures Fund Application Committee reviewed applications for the 2425 school year and granted a total of $1,294,797.58 to schools in order to improve the quality and quantity of nutritious food being provided for students. All 49 schools in the Council Thompson District provide some form of breakfast, lunch, snack or additional food top-up to support students. Currently, 35 schools provide both breakfast and lunch services to students. These programs vary in size and scale and are continuing to evolve as schools develop infrastructure to support food accessibility. Indigenous students and families. After consulting with the Indigenous Education Department, $125,000 has been allocated to support Indigenous family meals or other Indigenous-focused celebrations and initiatives hosted by schools. This amount also includes support for the Indigenous graduation and the District Powwow. In addition, $40,000 has been allocated to the Indigenous community outreach workers to help support Indigenous students and their families with food security. Moving forward, District Principal Carmichael will consult with the Indigenous Education Council regarding the use of Feeding Futures Funds professional development. Many schools are using this funding to engage in projects that increase food literacy, knowledge, skills and hands-on learning opportunities such as exploring Indigenous food sovereignty, local food sources, traditional foods and food production, growing school gardens, creating rural starfish backpack programs, offering school community pantries and cupboards and cooking meals to celebrate cultural diversity. School leaders and staff continue completing food safe certification as required. A district feeding futures newsletter has also been created and distributed to school leaders. The newsletter contains links to seasonal recipes, including Indigenous-focused recipes and food practices, cultural food celebrations and links to local and provincial organizations that promote food literacy in schools, grant applications and learning opportunities for school communities. Community partners. District Principal Carmichael collaborates with community partners to build the capacity in each school community to increase stigma and barrier-free access to nutritious foods for students who need it. Current community partnerships include the Boys and Girls Club, Camelot's BGC, Camelot's, Interior Health Farm to School, B.C., B.C. Fruit and Vegetable Program, Mount Paul Community Food Center and the Council's Food Bank. The annual projected allocation to these partnerships to help increase quantitating quality of nutritious foods being provided for students is $301,000. Examples of how district supports our community partnerships through Feeding Futures funding includes the following. Community fridge program with the BGC. Camelot's continues to operate at Truck and Valley View this year, enabling students to access a large variety of nutritious snacks and meals at no cost to students. Meals are prepared by volunteers and delivered twice weekly to each participating school. Before and after school snack funding is provided to BGC Camelot's to ensure our students have access to food in vulnerable after-school hours, including Truck, Brocklehurst, Norcam and Valley View, as well as supporting Power Start Breakfast Program. Food literacy learning opportunities with the Mount Paul Community Food Center and continuation of support for increased number of students through the Starfish Backpack Program and food share provided by the Council's Food Bank. Our Starfish Backpack Program has increased from 225 to 250 backpacks this year. The numbers of backpacks need, needed, continue to rise, leading to additional backpacks being packed and provided through the school board office to meet this need. And 13 of our schools receive weekly food share deliveries from the Council's Food Bank. District Principal Carmichael continues to collaborate with interior health dietitian, cannibal caterers and school leadership to ensure snacks and meals programs are nutritious. Ongoing opportunities to provide more nutritious and inclusive menu options are being discussed with the current caterers with quality and quantity of the meals program being the focus. Principal Carmichael also sports, participates in the Provincial Feeding Futures Community of Practice Zoom webinars where opportunities, challenges and provincial practices are shared. In collaboration with the Health Promoting Schools Coordinator, Alex Berger, a Feeding Futures survey has been created and will be shared with school leaders in January. This is in addition to the provincial survey that will be sent out later this year. The intent is to determine successes, impact on student health, regulation and achievement, challenges and opportunities to improve efficiencies and allocation of funds. Staffing. One of our challenges continues to be shortage of staffing. It's difficult to build or expand school snacks and meals programs equitably across the district. Many schools require more than an additional 45 minutes a day from a CEA or AEW to effectively provide a nutritious meals program. In addition, some schools are having difficulty finding staff members who would like the additional time. Rural schools face challenges in regard to food pricing, availability and selection and access to caterers. Fortunately, Feeding Futures Funds provides an honorarium for non-district staff and supplemental wages for district staff. This additional staff time has been allocated to strengthen each school's capacity to provide nutritious snacks and meals for students. Certified education assistants or Indigenous education workers from each school are able to work an additional 45 minutes per day when needed and as the school budget allows to organize the snacks and meal programs in their schools. Based on the Feeding Futures applications received, the total staffing costs for wages, including honorariums for volunteers is approximately $105,440,000. Spending plan. The current spending plan for the Feeding Futures program funded through the special purpose fund is as follows. This year, we had a carryover, which pushed our total allocation to $2,242,465,000. Funding allocations, $1,294,797.58. And I'm just going to jump to the part where I appreciate your time for the amended budget numbers. This memo was completed on Wednesday, printed on Friday, but I had the opportunity to meet with finance and my admin assistant on Friday to what we're doing is trying to sit down monthly and just go through budget allocations, requests that we've received since September, checking in with the school programs just to make sure we're really keeping tight on our numbers. And I was able to reallocate and distribute some more funds to schools on Friday, which meant I had to recheck and update my numbers this morning. So thank you to Chelsea Eisner and the finance department for being able to meet and make those numbers amended. So this is the very hot off the press update of where we stand right now. We currently have $14,967 left to allocate. And the redistributed funds as of Friday, the majority went directly to supporting food and other supplemented wages because we had some additional CEAs and volunteers that were able to be identified to support food programs and some supplies. So this memo is provided for information report, pardon me, respectfully submitted by myself.
Thank you very much for that, for that very detailed report. And I'm going to look to trustees for questions. I see trustee Hickson has his hand up. Yes, trustee Hickson.
Thank you so much. That, that is an awesome report as always, just your principal Carmichael. Two questions from me. I'm curious what the progress is around the discussions for improving nutrition in, in schools. Do you, do you have any idea when, when that will likely be done? And I'm super curious, just read about it, learn about what that looks like. I'm very excited. And I'm super curious, just read about it, learn about what that looks like. I'm very excited, but how is that going? Do you know when that should be finished by?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Nixon. Through you, Chair Greve, to the board. This year, two schools piloted a new menu, which was larger in quantity and worked on increasing the amount of protein actually within the meals themselves, and trying to create a diversity where there was protein, but there was also vegetarian options and kind of a balance. So, moving forward, working with Kenyall Caters, he is providing an updated menu to myself in January that I'll be sharing with school leaders. He's also additionally reached out to several more schools to see their interest of a school meals program as well. But the primary focus is it did result in a slight increase in the cost of the meals. But so far, we're hearing positive feedback from the schools and the students. And I guess kind of non-quantitative data is principals and school leaders aren't seeing a lot of food waste in their garbage cans. So, it's ongoing. I hope that answers some of your questions, Trustee Nixon.
Thank you. And Trustee Nixon, is your second question supplemental to the first?
No.
Okay, I'm just going to check the room and see if there are any other questions. First questions before. Yes, Trustee Sim.
Thanks very much. I noticed there that there was a newsletter that was going out. I wonder if there is any thoughts or plans for sending out opportunities to help families learn more about food nutrition? Just how to enhance their food literacy, how to make, you know, a nickel stretch a little bit further? Is that part of this planning, or is it really just focused on what we learn at school?
Thank you, Trustee Sim. Through you, Chair Greve, to the board. Excellent idea, question. The newsletter, I just kind of came up with that idea of trying to find a way to identify what our local and provincial partners are, so schools could tap into them. But I really appreciate the insight of how we push that out to families. There is a plethora of information and resources, and so I'm happy to look into that and see how I can work with school leaders to share that out to families. One of my immediate thoughts to that is using school district webpages to create links as well. So, I was trying to create something local in nature, but also to expand just knowledge and resources. Some of the recipes included are how to stretch your ingredients, how to make simple kid-friendly meals that they will potentially eat, but I will pursue that. Thank you.
Supplemental?
And you're right, there's maybe community partners who are doing something. It just seems that there could be a lot of synergies in this. I know when I'm at the grocery store, the chicken sticks or whatever they are, it's a very popular stopping point for a lot of families. And I'm just wondering if maybe there's some myth-busting around the fact that are those the best bang for your buck? Or, you know, what other opportunities are there? And it's just, this is such a good program, and there's a lot of great stuff that's happening, so how to build on that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first questions? I'm not seeing any. I will go back to you, Trustee Nixon.
I just wanted to touch on, when you mentioned that there's a rise in starfish backpack demand, how is that looking in terms of our supply? Is there any worries of that becoming a bit shortened? I'm just curious, where do you see this going? Is it a worrying rise?
Thank you, Trustee Nixon, for the question. Through you, Chair Greve, to the board. So, the Food Bank, so the cap at two-fifty is an agreement we have with the Food Bank because that's their capacity that they can meet and work with us to create. Last year, it was two-hundred-and-twenty-five. The program, I'm speaking to a mic, I don't need my glasses. The program, the original program started with a hundred-and-ninety packs. And so, the rise is steady as we get new families to our community. We peaked at two-hundred-and-fifty-eight packs earlier in the year, and the Food Bank was able to meet that demand. But from there, my office looks a little like a mini Food Bank. And our admin assistants at the board office are amazing, and they've created a schedule where different departments will come and build backpacks. So, for the short term, we have a plan to support families. As we know, moving into December is a very stressful time for a lot of families. So, I was aware of this season coming upon us, but I believe it will be something that is a challenge moving forward. I guess just to give you some high-level stats, over two million Canadians use or access food banks. That is a ninety percent increase since two thousand and nineteen. In our community alone, the Council's food banks saw an increase of eighty-five percent from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, and an additional six percent rise from twenty-three to twenty-four, which mirrors the Canadian kind of reality. This is the piece where, I guess it is worrying, is fifty percent of the people that are accessing the Food Bank, it's a twelve-thousand increase from last year, are fully employed. Sixty percent of those individuals have post-secondary education and are fully employed. And thirty percent of the food banks identify as running out of food. Fortunately, in Council, we have an amazing food bank, but they're also feeling the impact too, and they're having to take a look at their services and become more creative with it. So, it's something that we will continue to monitor and with the funds that we have allocated to best support schools as we can. I do a monthly check-in with our schools, and if there are schools that aren't using their allocation of backpacks, I just redistribute them to other schools. So, it's been very good. It's now to the point where school leadership will reach out to me and say, hey, I can shift two or three to other schools.
Thank you so much. That is a fantastic answer.
Thank you. Just before, I don't see any other hands. I just had a quick question, and this is actually related to a bit of a conversation around the cost increases in our rural areas for groceries and for things like that. And when we look at food security and feeding futures and how it is impactful in our rural areas, are we able to, I guess, support in a way that actually takes into account the differing food prices in different areas as well? So, when we're looking at either optimizing like recipes, groceries, things like that, but also do we ship out, in a sense, these things from community here where it may be less expensive to our rural areas, obviously not wanting to necessarily, yeah, I'm just wondering sort of what the process is for that.
Thank you for the question, Chair Greve. It feels odd to say through Chair Greve to the board, but back to Chair Greve. Excellent point. Thank you. Some of the rural schools, not all, but some will pick up starfish backpacks and drive them out if the administration is located in town. That's not always possible for some of our locations. And it's something, just being a few months into this role, that I kind of have a checklist going to look forward to. How do we support our rural schools and communities? Because it does look different. Just to, is there a way we can utilize SD seventy-three services to get food to the communities when they make a trip? So, I do have a bit of a checklist started to find creative ways to support because it is having lived in many rural communities, your food selection sometimes is not as great, and the prices can impact your budget in a hurry.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. It looks like that is all the questions this evening. I know, trustees, this agenda item was for information purposes. And if there are no other questions, I will thank you very much, District Principal Carmichael, and turn it over to you, Dr. Nixon.
Thank you. So, we are on Logan Lake consultation. So, in Board Policy Two, the board is focused on community consultation to meet the needs of parents. When parents are considering a grade reconfiguration, the board follows the process for community engagement that's been outlined in Administrative Procedure one-three-five. From October to the present, parents and staff at Logan Lake have considered whether to move grade five and six students back to the elementary school. Principal Ron Collins, Vice Principal John Blakely, Assistant Superintendent Mattis, Trustee McKelvey, and I have engaged with parents and staff on October sixteenth, where nineteen parents were. On October twenty-third, a webinar for Logan Lake parents and staff. Through multiple surveys, including November fifth to eighth, the staff survey, November twelfth to fifteenth, a parent survey, and then from November nineteenth to twentieth, grade five parents receive phone calls and emails to ensure that they had expressed their point of view as they would be the most impacted next year, should this grade reconfiguration be considered. So, while the details of these engagements are contained in the report, I will take time to provide the overall analysis of the results for the board, as well as the recommendation of the Focus Committee, which was comprised of Logan Lake parents and staff. The majority of staff, sixty-one percent, and parents who responded to the survey supported a phased-in approach where grade four students would stay for grade five in the fall of two thousand and twenty-five at the elementary school. And then they would stay for grade six in two thousand and twenty-six. When grade five parents were individually contacted, sixty-three percent preferred a phased-in approach as just described, and thirty-three percent wanted to have their children go back to the elementary school for the fall of two thousand and twenty-five, which would have meant all grade five students would go back this year. One parent was good with either approach. Both the staff and parents who support a phased-in approach believe it provides time for parents and staff to adjust to the change, and it will enable time to support this transition. In addition, there is a minority who do not see the need for this reconfiguration. Forty-six-point-nine percent of parents who supported a move now commented on their perspectives about the negative impacts of having older and younger students together. So, the focus group met. They reviewed all of the results that you see in the report, and I won't go through them all here, but they are there for you. And they made a decision to provide the board with the following recommendation. That the board approves a phased-in grade reconfiguration for the current grade four students to stay for grade five in Logan Lake Elementary School in two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, and to stay in Logan Lake Elementary School for their grade six year in two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven, pending the budget to manage these changes. Given the estimated budget, which is provided in the report, it is suggested to move forward with this change, but to recognize that the expected maximum budget for this will be ten thousand dollars, as there may be some unexpected costs. In two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, district administration will review the operational impacts of the grade four staying in grade five for that year. If there is a need for further consultation about whether or not to have grade fives continue at the elementary school in grade six, then such consultation would happen before January two thousand and twenty-six. At the same time as consultation that year, financial costs would be, again, estimated for the board. I'm happy to take any questions. Should the board have any?
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Trustees, I know that this agenda item is for action with the recommendation in your board package. It's in your green embargoed board report. There aren't page numbers, but it's I think it's on this third piece of paper on your report. So, is there any questions? Are there any questions from trustees for Dr. Nixon around this agenda item, this report, or the consultation process before we look at entertaining a motion? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. Trustees, this is, as I said, it's an action item, and I'm wondering whether anyone, yes, Trustee Sim.
I think the only question that I might have is related to the comment about the enrollment numbers for the high school and how that tracked with when there might be some concern about those numbers dropping. Is there a threshold, or what do we have to look at, or where do we bump up against that? Like, just watching the longevity for that community with that program.
Through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sam. That's an excellent question. We actually reviewed the operational impacts right in the second survey, and we saw that with the current enrollment, there would be no impact at all. They have the room in both schools. They have sufficient enrollment moving from grade to grade at this time. And so, in reviewing it also with Director McDonald, he saw no concerns at least for five years, he said, and probably beyond that. We're not talking about a move that is involving a lot of students, which is part of the benefit of moving, sorry, of having one group just simply stay rather than two groups. The principal and vice principal also did a mock schedule and said that they saw no problem for at least the next four to five years. So, I do believe that we are fine to proceed regarding that concern.
Yeah, thanks very much. Just looking at the community data, it does look like Logan Lake is a community on the growth side of things, and I almost wonder if this decision isn't going to help further that growth and attention into the schools and give some confidence to parents who are moving in.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm not seeing any. Is there a trustee that wants to put forward the motion as recommended in your board package? Yes, trustee Jules. Trustee Jules, you are moving that the board approves a phased-in grade reconfiguration for the current grade four students to stay for grade five in Logan Lake Elementary Schools in two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, and stay in Logan Lake Elementary School for their grade six year in two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven, pending the budget to manage these changes. Seconded by trustee Sim, any discussion on the motion? All right, I'm seeing no discussion. I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Dr. Nixon, does that conclude this agenda item for you this evening?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item next is yours as well, Dr. Nixon.
Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board, eight-point-seven good news. In the district strategic plan, the board is committed to the commitments of connections, relationships, well-being, equity, and sustainability. It has become part of our routine to celebrate good news in our school leaders' meetings, and we do this every four to six weeks. And this is an example of some of the stories that emerged out of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four school and district leaders' meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Nixon. Trustees, this agenda item was for information purposes and in your packages. Are there any questions on this agenda item before we move on to item next? All right, seeing none. Dr. Nixon, does this conclude your agenda items for this evening?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we will move on to reports from Secretary Treasurer, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon, over to you.
Thank you, Chair Greve. Through you to the board. On page one-hundred-and-twenty-one of the agenda package, there is a report on the Trunk Hill Valley property. Under Board Policy Two, role of the board, the board shall approve long-term contracts, including real property lease agreements. Just bring your attention to, under the status section, on October twenty-second, Mr. Jamie Vera from TNRD asked the district to continue with a lease agreement. And on October twenty-ninth, Superintendent Nixon communicated with Mr. Ben Vandergratt from Morelli-Cherco on the best way to proceed with a lease for the Trunk Hill property. Based on Mr. Vandergratt's recommendation at the district's APs and the school act, the recommendation was to create a disposal bylaw. Included for the board's reference in the agenda item is a draft bylaw and the three recommendations for consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Trustees, if we are wanting to move forward with this bylaw, I would actually seek a motion to approve the reading of this bylaw three times in one meeting. But are there any questions for Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon before we look at considering this bylaw? All right, I am seeing no questions around it. I would look for a motion. I believe I do need a motion to read it three times. This evening moved by Vice Chair, yes, yes.
Just a question on that is, just because of the nature of the report, if we read it for the first time, would that evoke any responses from the public that might give the board some consideration for a second reading?
Dr. Nixon?
Thank you through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sim. You're absolutely right that if there was someone in the public gallery who was to request to speak to the board, it would be the board's purview to decide to accept a presentation at a later date, and that could actually stop the readings. That's why there are three, and when we inquired as to summarizing the bylaw and whether to read it three times, we were informed through the parliamentarian at BCS TA that that is the purpose of reading it actually three separate times, is exactly what you're saying, trustee Sim, to give people an opportunity. Thank you.
So, with that, my recommendations would be for the first reading. Second? Second, third?
Yes.
Sorry, I must have misspoke through you, board chair Grieve to trustee Sim. I apologize if I miscommunicated. What I meant to say is that the bylaws read three times. If there was an interruption in the readings, uh, at any point in that time, if there was someone in the gallery, there'd be the option of the board to stop reading, the readings of the bylaw. Otherwise, it would be three readings in a row.
Right. Yeah.
Yes, trustee Carpack.
I, I'm kind of with trustee Sim on this, that we haven't had necessarily any, um, opportunities for the public to weigh in on this, and that perhaps by only doing one reading tonight, that then gives the public an opportunity to present, um, any concerns that they might have. I'm well aware that in most municipal governments, they don't do all three readings in one night, and that this is kind of, um, although it's our usual practice, it's not necessarily the norm in other, um, government bodies.
So we have a motion that hasn't been seconded. Yes, Vice Chair Kershaw. Yeah, we have, we have a motion that hasn't been seconded, so we actually have not approved a motion to read three times this evening. I think that it would be then important, uh, to find out from a parliamentarian perspective or standpoint, um, when the second and third readings would take place, and how long do we wait between, um, readings? We, if we read tonight, then would we read at the next public, um, meeting the second two times, or would we continue to have one reading per board meeting until it's concluded? And how long does that put off, um, put off things in terms of looking at the extension of the agreement, I guess would be my question.
I, I would, I would love to hear your input.
No, I'd love to have a part, like, get a second review on that, so.
Uh, sorry, I'm sorry, what was?
Never mind.
Oh, no, please, I'm.
So I, I wasn't sure, because my face talks, and I noticed that your face was having a conversation. And so I want, I was curious about your, um, input and your, I mean, you sit at the TNRD, you've got some, uh, parliamentary experience. I was just wondering what your thoughts were on this one. I don't know what it is for school boards, uh, but you're absolutely right for the municipalities that it could be done a first reading, and then second and third at a, uh, a subsequent one. Is there urgency in passing this tonight?
So I'm going to ask, uh, Dr. Nixon around the urgency part of passing it, and I do want to caution and only, and it's not to, to look at, uh, the relevance of, of trustee Kang's comments in this area, but because trustee Kang is an employee of TNRD, um, it actually creates, uh, conflict in terms of looking at weighing in on, um, like, that idea of, like, this agenda item, if I believe it actually puts it in, like, the, there's a.
And then you, I, I was not clear in, um, I was just interested in his, in his, his experience. It's okay. I think we're good on this one. Sorry, trustee Kang.
Yes, Vice Chair Kershaw. Sorry, I'll actually let Dr. Nixon talk about the urgency, and then I'll go to you, Vice Chair Kershaw. Yes.
Uh, thank you, board chair Grieve to the board. Uh, there, of course, when we're dealing on the operational side, there's always, uh, you never do things quickly enough, right? Everybody wants to get it done. Um, this has been in the, um, board's, uh, reports for, I would say, I'd have to go back, I believe it was April about a year and a little bit ago. And so it's been quite some time from, uh, the time that you first heard about it till now. So the TNRD, of course, would like to finish the lease, and that's, uh, I'm only speaking from the operational staff perspective. That's their perspective for sure by email, but that's certainly not, uh, anything that we succumb to. What we did is we do our usual process where you saw this in camera with a contract. We made sure that it was legally reviewed and it was appropriate, and it was ready to go in every way. Uh, we consulted with, uh, legal counsel as to a requirement for consultation. The board learned about that in camera earlier this evening. And at that point, I asked, uh, legal counsel whether or not we had an obligation to, uh, consult further, and legal counsel advised that we did not. So it's, I just want to apprise the board of what I've learned about this, and really, uh, it's in the board's purview, uh, to choose to do one reading or all three readings and to consult or not consult, but those are the guidelines we've had. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Chair Kershaw.
Thank you. Um, not being the parliamentarian to the board, but, um, the motion to allow all three readings is, uh, actually outlined in the school act, which allows all three readings. If the motion to allow all three readings of a bylaw fails, or, um, actually, sorry, it has to be unanimous motion. If it's not a unanimous motion, the board may only read the first two readings of a bylaw. The third reading would happen at a subsequent board meeting. So, um, if the will of the board is not to read all three readings tonight, we would do the first two readings. The third reading would happen at a subsequent, um, meeting.
Great, thank you. All right, and so it, I don't even think we need to, if we're not going to even have a second on a, on the motion to read three times, I, I would get the, and that we know for sure that there's, um, some discomfort in terms of reading all three times this evening. Uh, we will read two times and then look, uh, to see if we get any, um, inputs, uh, around the bylaw, and then look at reading it for a third time in our next meeting. Is there any more dis- discussion on this, or am I hearing the room, uh, correctly? I don't want to make any assumptions here. Uh, trustee Carpack, trustee Sam, or anyone online?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't vote for the three readings, so if you need a unanimous, then.
Yeah, no, yeah, and I just didn't know if you had any, um, if that, if this was okay in terms of looking at the two tonight, and then what, as per process, okay. We're good. Okay. No, the mo- the motion wasn't seconded, so it's not actually on the floor to be.
Were you going to second it? Well, okay.
Yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be unanimous. You can second it, actually, and we can, we can go, okay, so, so seconded by trustee Kang, that the reading of the bylaw, um, be read three times this evening. Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? I think we've kind of already heard it, but I'll ask if there's any discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed? All right, uh, we have trustee Kang, trustee Carpack, and trustee Sim in opposition. The motion does not carry unanimously, and therefore, uh, only two readings of the bylaw will occur this evening. And the third, uh, reading at a subsequent, uh, board meeting. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, trustee Kang, for that as well. Okay, so, um, according to section sixty-five four of the school act and B C S T A guidelines for boards of education about resolutions and bylaws, the bylaw is to be read two times, uh, this evening and one time at a subsequent board meeting, uh, and will be moved and seconded, um, after each reading of the bylaw, and the third will be looked for a mover and a seconder after the subsequent meeting. So the first and second readings will take place this evening. According to section sixty-eight of the school act, a bylaw that has been made publicly available to the board of education and to the public may be summarized rather than read in its entirety. Tonight, the board of education is exercising its right to dispose property owned by the board under section sixty-five five of the school act. And in this bylaw, land refers to any interest in land, including any right, title, or estate. The board of education follows section five of the disposal of land or improvements order, which indicates that boards must not dispose of land or improvements by sale and transfer in fee simple or by way of lease of ten years or more unless such disposal is to another board of an independent school for education purposes, or is approved by the minister in accordance with section five of the disposal of land or improvements order. Also, in section five of this order, the minister may approve with any terms and conditions of a disposition of land or improvements. Therefore, be it resolved that the board of education of school district number seventy-three, Countess Thompson, hereby authorizes the lease of normal rent of one dollar of the property located at nine seven six zero Meadow Road, Countess B C, and legally described as P I D zero zero one dash six nine seven dash one one one, Lot nineteen, section eleven, township twenty-two, range twenty, W six M, K D Y D, Plan K A P two eight six six nine. The board of education confirms that the disposal of property does not require ministerial approval pursuant to the disposal of land or improvements order, because it is a full term of five years, and the property will not be required for future educational purposes in school district number seventy-three, Countess Thompson. This bylaw may be cited as school district number seventy-three, Countess Thompson, disposal of real property bylaw, read for the first time this day, the ninth, uh, day of, uh, December twenty twenty-four, and that would require a mover and a seconder for the following, um, recommendation. That the board of, sorry, the board approves that the disposal of real property bylaw was read for the first time on the ninth of December twenty twenty-four, moved by Vice Chair Kershaw, seconded by trustee Kang. According to section sixty-eight of the school act, a bylaw that has been made publicly available to the board of education, and the public may be summarized rather than read in its entirety. Tonight, the board of education is exercising its right to dispose of property owned by the board of, um, by the board under section sixty-five five of the school act. And in this bylaw, land refers to any interest in land, including any right, title, or estate. The board of education follows section five of the disposal of land or improvements order, which indicates that boards must not dispose of land or improvements by sale and transfer in fee simple or by way of lease of ten years or more unless such disposal is another board of an independent school for education purposes, or is approved by the minister in accordance with section five of the disposal of land improvements order. Also, in section five of this order, the minister may approve with any terms and conditions the disposal of land or improvements. Therefore, be it resolved that the board of education of school district number seventy-three, Countess Thompson, hereby authorizes the lease for nominal rent of one dollar of the property located at nine seven six zero Meadow Road, Countess B C, and legally described as P I D zero zero one six nine seven one one one, Lot one nine, section eleven, township twenty-two, range twenty, W six M, K D Y D, Plan K A P two eight six six nine. The board of education confirms that the disposal of property does not require ministerial approval pursuant to the disposal of land or improvements order, because it has a full term of five years, and that the property will not be required for future educational purposes in school district number seventy-three, Countess Thompson. This bylaw may be cited as school district number seventy-three, Countess Thompson, disposal of real property bylaw, read a second time this ninth day of December twenty twenty-four. I would require a mover and a seconder for the following recommendation. The board approves the disposal of real property bylaw was read for the second time on the ninth of December twenty twenty-four, moved by Vice Chair Kershaw, seconded by trustee Carpack. And that concludes our bylaw reading for this evening. Pardon me? Oh, sorry, us, I, I need to call a question. All those in favor? Thank you. At opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Now that concludes, uh, the reading of the bylaw for this evening. Thank you.
Item next.
Item next.
Thank you, Chair Grieve. Through you to the board. On page one hundred and twenty-seven of the agenda package is an update on the Student and Family Affordability Fund for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. Under Board Policy Two, the board shall approve the annual budget and allocation of resources to achieve desired results, including strategic priorities. At the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting, the board approved the annual audited financial statements, which included four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of unspent funds from the Student and Family Affordability Fund. As of November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars of those unspent funds had been accessed by parents and families, uh, leaving a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars remaining. Forty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two of those funds have been earmarked for assistance with the increase in the per kilometer field trip rate, and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars are available to continue to help students and families with the cost of school supplies, course fees, academy fees, and enhancement fees. This report was just for information, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that report. Um, trustees, do you have any questions on this, uh, report that was given for information purposes? All right, seeing none. Uh, thank you very much for that update on the student and family affordability. Uh, taking us on to item next, uh, which is yours as well, uh, nine point three.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Grieve. Through you to the board. On page one hundred and twenty-nine of the agenda package is the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Statement of Financial Information Report. Uh, the financial information report is required under the Financial Information Act, section one. It requires school districts to submit a statement of financial information to the Ministry of Education each year within six months of our fiscal year end. Uh, the Statement of Financial Information Report details this district's debt, if there was any, uh, employees earning over seventy-five thousand dollars, as well as reimbursement of expenses to those employees, amounts paid to trustees as remuneration, as well as reimbursement of expenses to trustees. Any severance agreements started during the fiscal year, and the range of months pay that those agreements are covered, and amounts paid over twenty-five thousand dollars to suppliers. Uh, the report does require approval, and a draft recommendation, or proposed recommendation has been included in that report.
Thank you very much, um, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon. Uh, trustees, do you have any questions on this report, which has been presented for, uh, with a recommendation attached to it as well? Is there any discussion on this report before we look at, uh, entertaining the motion, um, that was in the recommendation in your package? All right, seeing no discussion. Is there anyone who wants to, uh, look at, um, providing a motion as recommended? Trustees Jules? You're going to move the motion recommended? I believe that is on page, I've got it here, actually, sorry. Uh, trustee Jules, you recommend that the board of education approves the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Statement of Financial Information as presented, seconded by trustee Carpack. Any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, does that conclude your agendas for, uh, items for this evening?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as per our, uh, lifting items from the consent agenda under new business, we have three APs that were lifted. Um, and we will start with, uh, AP three one nine, the opioid overdose response protocol. Trustee Sim, you requested that this agenda, uh, that this AP be lifted from the consent agenda.
Um, yes, in, in it, and having not been a part of the committee at the time, uh, the portion of it that referred to the student engagement has been removed, and I understand, because I think that there had been some, um, some complications with that within our district. The only thing is, is that it's the number one killing, um, cause in British Columbia for people between the ages of eighteen and fifty-nine. And I'm wondering where, or even if it is our purview, um, is teaching kids how to deal with this. And while it's important that we've got an adult, and adults in the room, but the time of response is so, um, immediate, that what if our kids were part of that education model? And, and I don't know how to do it, so that's why I wanted to lift it. I wanted to get some thoughts, um, around the table. But just because we're, we've maybe got some discomfort with it, it, it isn't, isn't it a necessary skill?
I will turn it over to Dr. Nixon. Thank you, trustee Sim.
Uh, thank you, board, uh, through you, board chair Grieve to the board and trustee Sim. Uh, we have, um, discussed this extensively, and part of the issue is that it isn't in the curriculum explicitly, and also that when we went to legal counsel to try to get, um, wording for this, we went to two different legal counsel, um, members that we trust greatly, and neither were prepared to give us approved, um, wording, because they said the liability on a school system to do this is a concern. However, for interior health to do it, it's not a concern. So it was a matter of saying, how do we work with our partners then? So then the next question and, uh, conversation happened at the all superintendent's meeting with, the ministry to say, what might we do together to get some, uh, opportunity for common wording? And that is exactly where it was left. Um, it's in the hands now of our current, uh, Assistant Deputy Minister to, to provide some guidance, but we couldn't get, uh, a comfort level from our, our local legal counsel, and even, um, from our surrounding districts. We actually went to the Thompson, Okanagan, and surveyed nine districts. They're all doing different things. Uh, most were, uh, concerned about proceeding. So that's why we struck it out for now, because we didn't have enough support to be able to proceed. And if there's anything that Assistant Superintendent Mattis would like to add, because you, of course, have been very in- involved with this, that would be helpful, too.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Nixon. Through you, board chair to trustee Sim. Yes, we've, we have, we've worked a, a lot on this. Um, prior to my arrival, I know former Assistant Superintendent. I know former Assistant Superintendent Mo Chikus and. Our manager, who helps us look after all of our naloxone training, Melissa. Spent quite a good amount of time on this. Administrative procedure. As Superintendent Nixon said, there's been a lot of work and modeling actually from interior health. Seeking from districts around us. So I don't know if I have too much to add, but I, I will just reinforce. We've done a very thorough. Job of trying to do the best, best we could right now with this administrative procedure. Based on our legal advice.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Mattis. And for that, for that. Information, Dr. Nixon, around how the AP came to its, I guess, current, the, the way that it's currently written. So if I'm hearing correctly, we've got our, our administrative procedure, but we're also working with the health authorities and with the Ministry of Health to look at how. Education is provided for our students in terms of safety, but not, it's not sort of in the curriculum as it stands. But having stuff available for students with permission and with access, if I'm hearing correctly.
Through you, Board Chair Greve, to the Board. Yes, that, that's exactly right. And also the Ministry of Education, childcare, to help us as superintendents to have wording that we can use with parents and so forth. Because it's not in the curriculum, we need some support from our education ministry side as well. Education, Ministry of Education, childcare. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Sim, do you have any other questions on that?
No, I think that that was, that was the answer that was required is just to understand the history and how deep this issue is going and the fact that other partners are required. And, you know, it, it stems that we don't teach first aid in schools, so this might be something that would be under that. So it's just finding different ways to help our kids get educated in the way in the world. And there's lots of ways to assist that we can look at. So I really appreciate all the input.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion from trustees on this AP? All right, seeing none. Moving on to item next under new business was AP three six zero point two. The Appendix Academic Integrity, also lifted by you, Trustee Sim.
Yeah, I really like the fact that this is academic integrity, A I, so it seems timely. There was a session at B C S T A that talked about this. I, I think that Superintendent Nixon also took away some, some great slides. I understand that they've probably been presented to principals. What, what I'm not sure about in this one is that it, it still feels a bit like. This could have been written ten years ago as opposed to being written now. Where we really need to provide some clarity around how students are using A I. It's got a sort of one line in here. That says, including but not limited to emerging technologies such as artificial intelligence platforms. There was a great slide at B C S T A that really was clear about when to use it and when not to. And I'm wondering if that has to be incorporated into this, this AP.
Dr. Nixon, I will turn that over to you as well.
All right, through you, Board Chair Greve, to Trustee Simon to the Board. We did have a discussion around when it is time to expand an administrative procedure or even create an administrative procedure. I think for now, this is where we're at because we're just developing, in fact, even today, we have a very, we have Director. De Fair, sorry, Director De Fair, who presented to us today on the work that has come from a. A group of principals who are working hard with you as well as teachers and a coordinator. But that framework needs a little more consultation. And so rather than us starting to change our administrative procedures prior to finishing that consultation, expanding out what we believe. As a district having a common language, we felt it was premature to start. Putting, solidifying it in the form of a procedure. And I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Riley if you had anything to add.
Yeah, thanks so much, Lieutenant Nixon, through your chair grief to the board, specifically trustee Sim. So another part that we're also working is we're working with regional district leaders around developing some clarity around A I. So we definitely killed our directed affair has done tremendous job as Nixon said. And starting the work for A I framework for our district, which does lay out exactly what you're talking about, trustee Sim. So, you know, proper usage, ethical usage, those kinds of considerations. But we also want to bring that to a larger group in terms of our neighboring districts. And then do some further work around deepening that understanding so that we can be really clear with what we're sharing out to not only. Our, our people in the school system, like our principals and our teachers, but also to the public and to the trustees.
So supplemental, if I may, and so I appreciate that and I, but I also wonder if that isn't going to be the issue that we're going to bump up the most. In, under, under this one. And does this particular AP need even a further one liner? That A I will require, like, I, I don't know how to handle it because we haven't taught our kids exactly how to use it. So if it's a punitive or where, where do we support the students, where do we support administration? It's just not current enough for what we currently need. It's coming, but what do we do in the meantime if this is our default?
Dr. Nixon, I'll leave it to you.
Through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sim. That's a really good question. Administrative procedures usually come alongside professional learning, not in place of it. And this is, as Assistant Superintendent Riley discussed, we actually have. Through our chapter, we're working with Dean Sheresky, who is going to lead all of the region. In looking at not just policy and procedure, but the professional learning to go with it, the parent education to go with it, the teacher education. Because what we've come to know is that. We, we will constantly be revising a procedure ahead of the learning if we don't do it at one time, almost parallel. And we, what you saw at B C S T A was a presentation by a lower mainland superintendent. Who has had a regional network started. And that, that regional network has produced a common understanding and they are only just now looking at their administrative procedures. They actually didn't jump to that first. So I think we just wanted to acknowledge that A I exists. Rather than try to do an encompassing job in this AP reflective of our framework and our common understanding, which we are in the middle of. And so while it's a bit messy, the advice from our partners in the lower mainland is take it on in parallel. And don't be afraid to make incremental changes as people's understanding of those changes come along. So I think it's just an excellent question. And I think that I'm very proud of the work that Director De Fair has done. She really did pick this up and start working with a group. And in our chapter, we are collaborating with, you know, nine, nine districts. And so I'm looking forward to that as well. I think Assistant Superintendent Riley is correct. That that'll really help us to do a better job of making this more contemporary and have more resonance with our administration and with our teachers and with our staff. If we take the professional learning alongside rather than rely on an AP to do it all. So we did talk about not revising it, but we felt like the advice, as I said, was to take small steps along the way. And if there's anything else I've missed, I'm happy for Assistant Superintendent Riley to comment or Director De Fair for that matter as well.
So, Dr. Nixon, if I'm hearing correctly, this is an AP that, like with all of the administrative procedures are always. I guess a work in progress that can be something that can be revised as we learn more information as technology changes and as things like that come into play. But that for now, it is referenced, which is more than it was before. So the additional reference of it is there, but looking at how to accurately articulate how we're going to manage those things is something that will evolve out of. Research and professional development. Okay. Trustee Sim.
And I think that all that sounds great because we are, we've been talking about it and it's going to be starting to emerge. It will eventually parallel. As it reads right now, it still feels quite punitive for something that could be. And I don't know if it means the addition of, you know, so I'm sort of listening, the, the students' parents will be notified and, you know, there's some, there's some strong rules there. But is there room while it emerges, is in the event that A I has been identified as. The catalyst is that a discussion will be had around the learning of it. So it softens it because right now it's quite hard. Or we just let it go and we just trust that the integrity of the district and the work that's being done is going to carry it. But I, that is an area of concern that I think kids are going to get into trouble because they're getting mixed messages. Here, it's a good prompt and yet is it plagiarism? So I just worry about what this could mean for a grade ten to twelve student who doesn't quite understand the rules yet.
I'm gonna, I see that Dr. Nixon and Assistant Superintendent Riley has his hand up as well, so I, I'll leave to the two of you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say that, and I am happy to, to have you step in and give some additional information. I think you said it quite well when you said, this isn't where it needs to be yet. I think we acknowledge that. Now, I don't know that we've ever pulled an AP. I think we, we just work with it with our group. I actually agree with you because when I first started with C B C, when I first had my, my first call on A I. I got ready and I said to our group, but this is all about the rules. And they said, well, that's what you need to do. And I said, well, that's not, I can't just talk to them about the rules. And so I think you're quite right. It's dated and we, we have to do better. But I think it was a start to get everyone talking, but I think you're quite right that we need to continue to emerge a contemporary understanding with respect to A I. But I would like Assistant Superintendent Riley, please feel free to add. I just wanted to acknowledge that you're correct. Yeah.
Hey, I apologize for chiming in. I just have to go to another meeting, so I'm going to be leaving this one. And my apologies to everyone. All the best for a happy Christmas and we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you, trustee Ophi. Have a good day.
Thanks to Lieutenant Nixon. All I was going to add to, to this discussion is, you know, basically any of these bullet points. We would expect that teachers are setting up very specific and understandable directions to kids. So that they're aware as to what's acceptable, what isn't acceptable in an assignment. Now, that can change absolutely, trustee Sim, because from teacher to teacher, they might say, you know what, you can use this prompt. Another teacher might say, I don't want you to use this prompt. And so, and that's the same for any of these though. Like again, a teacher might say, you know, you can use a website, you can pay something on there, you have to then, you know, cite it or whatever else, or you can't. And so that's something that we have to work with, with all our teachers and all our principals, regardless of the technology. But absolutely, to your point, A I is, is so readily available and so powerful. That it definitely is something we have to be a lot more focused on in terms of what the ethics and what the appropriate use are. So we can definitely do that as we continue to grow our understanding of it ourselves.
I'm just looking to see if other trustees have any questions or comments. Back to trustee Sim.
Okay, well, this is just really just me then. So I'm fine letting it go. I just, I, I just. As, as it emerges and as it changes, recognizing that we're probably not going to get to anything perfect. But maybe as we go through these processes with the regional group, is that there is something in here that acknowledges that there will have to be a learning. Whether it be, you know, because not all teachers are up to date. I mean, you know, we had some teachers who were saying, okay, you have to do this all in pencil, you know? And so is that how we get around A I? It's not necessarily the way to do it. So as a district, as a society, it's, it's, we're all catching up. But I, I just, just to allow a learning that's softer for, for students at this point in time. That's it.
Dr. Nixon. Thank you so much. Through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sim. These are always the exciting opportunities in Education Procedures Advisory Committee. This is why we have the committee and robust discussions like this happen with our administrators and we appreciate what you've said. We recognize that it was only a beginning and we also recognize that we don't want to look like we're not contemporary or moving forward. So we will pull this AP, we'll bring it back to S C with the views that you've shared this evening because I think that they're valid and they help us see our blind spots. And so I, I get that and I, and I think Director De Fair gets that and Assistant Superintendent Riley is nodding his head. And I think that what you did this night, did tonight by lifting this AP is to talk about the power and strength of having multiple voices. So thank you. And I, I think we, we can probably do a little bit more than maybe we were a bit scared dipping our toe in. So we will take it back under advisement and some of the things you've said, we did talk about, we just thought, well, we'll, we'll start. But you know, sometimes when you hear another voice, it, it does resonate and you've done that for us this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Carpuck.
I just wanted to note that I don't think that the way that it's worded totally bans the use of A I. It just says, acknowledge that you're using it. So I think it's, you know, it's not a complete do or don't. I just think that. Clarifying that. The use of it does have its place, but it needs to be appropriate is, is really the big thing.
Yes, Vice Chair Kershaw.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that lifting it completely is necessarily the answer. I think maybe just taking some of the, the comments. Because, you know, that committee meets. I don't know that I, I don't know that you were necessarily saying lift it as much as saying, let's consider it further.
And, and I'm, I'm either or, and I wasn't actually saying lifting it. I loved it. I wasn't going to argue. But I, I also think that if we just highlight it as something that we continue to amend as the work that's being described also continues. So it's really sort of flagged and, and saying, okay, now can we make this a little more robust or a little more rounded? So, but it sounds like we're doing it and the purpose of this conversation was just to say, this is the one that we need to keep the yellow sticky on.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Moving on to item next, also under new business, AP one oh two, School Learning Plans, trustee Sim.
Yeah, well, hopefully this won't be as robust as that last one. It was really just looking at some of the learning plans and going through. And what I wondered is, is that after sitting here for a number of years, the common theme has always been a numeracy goal. That's consistent. And so we, we always kind of renew that annually. And I'm just wondering is, where would be the point that maybe we would look at our learning plans as a two-year cycle? Does that alleviate any stress on schools? Is that something different? Because it takes a while to move the dial so that if, do you, is it only a one-year goal? Because it takes time. And, and this may not be the place to address it. I just, I just wondered is that we go through a lot of work and then every year it's brand new. It's like we're reinventing, you know, when it's the same.
Yes, Dr. Nixon, I'll turn it over to you.
Through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sim. All good observations and observations that we get asked quite often. So the way school learning plans are lived is that they are living documents. They are dated in terms of when they make changes. They're constantly consulting with staff. And while a numeracy goal may be important, for example, I was just at a school that said there's a team of teachers that want to continue working with numeracy. But the focus is really on literacy this year. And so it's not about having two years or three years, but rather just having an approach to continuous improvement that is sensitive to the information we get. So the information being provincial results, we are very fortunate in this district to have really robust. What, what's called map data or district data that helps us know how primary students are doing. It's the N B O actually provincially. And then also now street data with Shane Seffir, talking with students who are maybe not heard marginalized historically. To help us understand what practices actually need to shift. So I think that it's not so much a school learning plan as an object, but as a process. And we can certainly look at wording and just make sure that we have created that and made it clear. But our administrators were in this very room on December fifth. And if I could have shown you and maybe I did take pictures, but they were all working on their learning plans with fresh data that they're getting from students. And they were busy making plans about what to do to change practice. When they go back to their administrative meeting, they'll go back and type right into their school learning plans, like learning plans are in constant states. Of change based on what kids need. So if that administrative procedure has a way of reifying it or making it seem static, that's, that certainly isn't how it's lived.
Yeah, and I think that that's all fine. I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get from this particular one is when do we know that we've achieved a goal at a school? Like, like where does that live in, you know, last year, this was our goal and then it's, it's refreshed. So even if there is, this year, it's going to be literacy. Where's the data that says we actually achieved our goal and that's why we are working on literacy as opposed to the numeracy?
Oh, that's excellent. So every school has a data appendix. So if we're talking about provincial data, it's constantly updated with trended data and also last year's or current information. As well as district information. So they have access in their folders to that data and they reference it in their school learning plan. So we actually really have taken a great deal of time to make sure that we review provincial data as well as district data and street data. To be able to see whether or not the results show that a goal needs to change. Does that help you?
Yeah, as I just had done a few scans of schools and didn't necessarily always see that. So maybe I'm not looking in the right place or something. So I'm trying to get that visible data, not the behind the scenes data. So that, you know, we make it so that it's on websites, we have to. So that, you know, we make it so that it's on websites. We have to, you know, publish those. But I'm trying to see where if somebody can loop around and go, oh yes, they did it. Like those measurements.
That's great. They usually do cite them within their document. Some people use that. Some people do cite the data within their document. Others have. A data appendices, if you will. So if you look at our district learning plan, we have it as a data appendices. To show the districts progress, but every school has that too. We haven't always, because the data does change and get updated, we haven't always. Published that data along with the school learning plan if the, if the principal hasn't cited it within. But in most cases, when I visit schools, I pull out their learning plan, the results are actually stated within their plan. And their data appendix may or may not be attached in detail, but they certainly have referenced the data in the plan itself. But parents do. Gain inside access to that data if they were to ask. It's not, it's certainly not hidden. It's something that we use and refer to on a regular basis. So. If, if there's a particular learning plan that you're looking at, you're thinking, I'm not sure about this. I would ask, I would ask the principal, could I see the data? And the PACs often do. They get. An overview of the quantitative data as well as the qualitative. But your points well taken that not every school necessarily cites the data within it.
Just the success metrics, that's it. And, and I love the new standardized one. I think we've come a long way as a district. Making it a lot similar. So people, it's, it's following that consistent. And I think that that's really good to kind of articulate it. Again, getting back to the administrative procedure, it was just something there so that we've got a way of looking at it. And being able to be, it's just easy to find for people. And it's easy to talk about, we did this and an important loop around to show that success.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Trustee Sim. I see no other discussion on that agenda item either. That concludes new business, business, sorry, business arising from public inquiries. I actually just want to mention. Okay, okay, I'll do that. Before we move on, just because I'm taking note of the time, it's eight fifty-six. I'm going to need a motion to extend our meeting beyond nine o'clock. Moved by Vice Chair Kershaw, seconded by Trustee Sim.
My fault.
I will call the question. All those in favor. Thank you. And opposed, see, seeing none, the motion carries. The motion carries. Yeah, so moving on to item next, we have reports from committees and chairs. So this just moves us on to the chairs report this evening. I just wanted to mention two letters, one that was sent response to Deepak with questions that had been raised at Deepak on November the 19th. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but it is available for you and just know that that is something that has been sent. And as well, I wanted to mention that there was a response to Mr. Chris Ponte, who's a Valley Park member. That was regarding building schools together and a response around that. So that also has been sent as well. So that is. Available if, if trustees are wanting more information on that. I also wanted to mention, so the, myself and Dr. Nixon received a letter from Minister Lisa Bear regarding cybersecurity threats. This was on November the 29th. You can see the letter on package 161, page 161 of your package. Sorry, that board chairs and superintendents were informed of security breaches in different districts. Including ransomware attacks, operation staff is ensuring that the guidelines provided by the ministry are in place. We also received a letter from the Minister of Education and Childcare. On December the 5th, and it's on page 163, and that was to acknowledge the welcome letter that was sent by the board. I wanted to have an opportunity to see that the, the new minister took the time to have a 10-minute conversation with me. Back on December, was that also on December the 5th? Yeah, sorry, on December the 5th. And so. It was a good opportunity where she asked for me to be able to give the highlights of what are, what is going on in our district and what our needs are. And so what I talked to her about. Predominantly was our capital challenges in terms of where we're sitting in terms of our southwest sector. The issue that we've been having with getting the Crown Grant application in Bachelor Heights. The fact that we continue to see growth and, and enrollment pressures in areas of town where we don't have schools located. We talked about accessibility, accessibility playgrounds. We had an opportunity to talk about a number of things there in terms of that. And. She was very, she was wonderful to speak to and she again took notes and said that there would be follow-up conversations around that. I thought it was really good to be able to highlight that. We highlighted recruitment and retention as an issue. Also highlighting. For us, the fact that. Again, like retrofitting of playgrounds was one. So we were talking about sort of new playground and new builds and things like that come with that accessibility in mind, but we're looking at different things like. Retrofitting playgrounds or if we're looking at moving portables and purchasing portables, that all of these things come out of our. A local capital and our operation, our, our operating budgets and how those are very taxing on our system. So we also talked about the rising. Costs of. Replacement like of TTOCs and things like that as well. And so we did have a chance to speak through those things. And so that call went very well. I also had an opportunity to connect with the Minister of Infrastructure, which is a new separate ministry. I guess Minister in the ministry. And that was actually an incredibly good conversation as well. It was Minister Bowen Ma, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. She was kind enough to reach out and actually say that she was curious to know how things were going. I believe she was trying to connect with all school boards. Around that and talked about where we were at again in terms of capital issues. Asked specifically around whether or not a land was an issue. And I said, you know, interestingly. We've had the Bachelor Heights land for quite some time. Aberdeen Secondary was approved and we had the land acquisition go through, but that in Juniper West. The other two sites in Aberdeen, Sun Peaks, things like that, we actually are looking at land will be an issue, but that our current sort of crisis points are on the capital builds and. The projections out even with the opening of Sina Elementary that as our elementary students are moving into secondary. What stress that's going to put on our, on our secondary system in the southwest sector. Again, talked about the Crown Grant application. We talked a bit about accessibility, but mostly about the portable costs as well. From a capital lens and an infrastructure lens and that we cannot catchment change our way out of our current challenges that we're having. Again, very kind. It was a really nice opportunity to connect and she said that we would have further conversations as well. So I wanted to let the board know about that. There was a letter from Minister Jody Wickens. Closed on page 164 to acknowledge the welcome letter that was sent by the board as well. BCSTA Fall Conference, which was November 21st, 22nd and 23rd. Thank you to trustees Hickson Kang and Sim. As well as Dr. Nixon for learning at this conference about accessibility, teacher and support staff bargaining. The provincial anti-racism framework, street data and impacts on school improvement from the keynote Shane Saphir. Obviously there was education on AI as well. And while there is more to share from this conference, we really appreciate your sharing and the learning that took place. The United Way, thank you to all staff who contributed to the United Way as a key partner in providing food, security, counseling, access and activities like after-school programs and support our students. Winter concerts. I want to thank. Staff, students and parents who are preparing for and putting together multiple conference, sorry, concerts throughout our district. Trustees, obviously you will be getting invitations from different schools and it's always a great opportunity for us to attend. Universal Human Rights Month is December 1st, 1st through 31st. In the district strategic plan, our cultural identity priority aims to ensure that every child feels safe, cared for. And that they can be who they are within an inclusive environment. We have student leadership groups who champion equity projects, including anti-racism. And pro-kindness and pro-compassion and validation of human rights throughout the district. Thank you for this ongoing work that is profiled, but not only celebrated on International Human Rights Day, which is December 10th. International Day of People with Disabilities was December the 3rd and our district accessibility committee meets. To set an action plan with respect to improving accessibility in our schools. Schools are undertaking this work. And one recent example is how some students, oh, sorry, some schools have received grants to support them to purchase bikes and scooters that enable students to be mobile. And enjoy taking an active role on the classes because of the mobility supports that they provide. International Volunteer Day was December 5th. Schools have many volunteers that. We want to thank every day for the work that they do. And at a district level, we also depend on the investment of volunteerism for community initiatives such as collecting and preparing backpacks for local food banks. So thank you to all of our volunteers. National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women was December 6th, and we acknowledge this day and share how it connects. To the importance of learning about healthy relationships and what to do when relationships are not healthy. Thank you to all staff who teach and support students to share when they experience unhealthy relationships aimed at preventing. Violence, but also knowing what to do if they witness violence against any person. And also acknowledging what the Consent Cafe has brought to our district as well. In that, in that same vein, Discovery Day, Day in Engineering is December 6th. And it has been an exciting month in November, which was careers week provincially. This Discovery Day in Engineering is another important opportunity for students to learn about potential career pathways. Finesse Annual Conference is December 12th to 14th. Thank you to staff who are going to attend the Finesse Conference. Where we learn about and participate in strategies to continue to move towards truth and reconciliation. And the holiday break, letting people know that. We as a Board of Education really do hope that everyone within our district family has a wonderful holiday season and come back feeling rejuvenated and refreshed in the new year. That concludes. My chairs report. Do you have any questions on that? Yes, Vice Chair Kershaw.
Just one, I know that the ministers haven't received any of their mandate letters yet. In your conversation with Minister Bowen Ma from infrastructure, do we have any sense yet on how. Her portfolio was going to look now that construction of schools has been moved into the general infrastructure in BC?
Yeah, I didn't actually get a sense of exactly how that was going to fit in, but definitely she was wanting to talk about capital specifically and, and the idea of capital projects and where we were at. And infrastructure being a part of it. And, and so I didn't get a sense of knowing exactly where that stands, but I did really get the sense that we are going to hear a lot more and have more conversations with her, which is. I think going to really help us better understand, but hopefully also be able to. Highlight the uniqueness of our local area and the fact that we, again, we span such a wide geographical region. Catchment changes are not an option. So it is, it was a good conversation, but not, not one that I have that answer to yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? On the comments on the chairs report? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to item next. Trustee Reports, inquiries and good news. Trustee Sim. So Trustee Sim just said that she attended BCSTA and is very thankful for the fact that we've already discussed it. Thank you very much for that update, Trustee Sim. I'm sorry. For that, thank you for that good news. We have no motions this evening, notice of meetings, a schedule of upcoming meetings. The KTT Labor Management Liaison Committee meeting is December 12th. Finance and Planning, December 16th. QP Labor Management Liaison Meeting, December 19th, and the next regular public board meeting will occur on Monday, January 13th. At the school board office at 1383 Ninth Avenue, and I will seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Trustee Carbock, seconded by Vice Chair Kershaw. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a safe and wonderful holiday season. Thank you.